Good evening. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health that are being held in the Selectmen's office on January 29, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being held in person and being recorded. Is anyone else recording other than us? Seeing none.
Dalton's in the process, it looks like.
Dalton's joining us?
And anonymous.
Do we have any, do we have any minutes?
I do not.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the municipal vulnerability program update. Steve Tyler, are you with us? Zooming in.
He's there, there I see him.
There he is.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
I assume you all are going to share the presentation from your end. I do have it if you want me to bring it up.
You want to bring it up? Go ahead.
Sure.
I have it here also. I gotta make him co-host. Having some problems with this machine, Steve. I'll just load your presentation.
It sounded like you said I'm good to proceed?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Tyler. I'm with Howard Sun Hudson. We've been helping the town of Hampton with your municipal vulnerability preparedness program and the grants that you've had follow on since the HAM grant. This is our first quarterly update to the Board of Selectmen with regard to the fiscal year 2024 Action Grant, where it includes the design of the main street bridge replacement and conceptual designs for taking the green infrastructure solutions a little bit further. Next slide. Our agenda is introductions. I'll tell you a little bit about the project and then the schedule for public involvement and then open up for questions and answers. Next slide. And just for introductions, my name is Stephen Tyler. I'm Associate Principal with Howard Sun Hudson and I'm responsible in charge of this project. Also online with me tonight is Christopher Lyman. He's our lead civil engineer on the project. And I think some, if not all of you, have met Chris through some of our past projects with the town. And then not able to attend tonight's meeting is Mary Bonner, who's been helping us with the public outreach and MVP. Next slide, please. This slide here just illustrates the core team of participants from the town. Active participation includes your town administrator, your highway superintendent, Select Board representative, your stormwater coordinator, Barry Weiner, a conservation commission member. Our power set has a bridge consulting team. Let's see. Two slides forward to the. Got one more, please. So the fiscal year 2024 Action Grant that the town received, you received funding from the Commonwealth in the amount of $247,000. $247,740. The HAM pound match component is 82,837. 32,837 is by match services and the form of labor. Assistant with the review and other coordination to public outreach and so forth. And then also there is a $50,000 cash match required of the town to help pay for the engineering services. That brings the total project value to $330,577. The deliverables we have on this project include kickoff meeting, which was completed last December. We have several public involvement and community engagement steps, this being the first of those steps. We have a full 100% bridge design and bridge ready for a bridge submission to be prepared. Similarly, the bridge permitting documents will be prepared and ready for submission. And then there will be some data collection for the green infrastructure low impact designs by the Conway School at relocation throughout town. And then the step six is the Conway School, their actual engagement and the development of their green infrastructure designs. The public involvement process of this project is going to include two community engagement sessions that will involve the Conway School, the two quarterly project updates to the Select Board, this being the first of those. And we will have at least a bridge replacement design public review meeting. And also the creation of the project website, which has been finished and is online and the link is on the page. Thank you. The replacement for design will include the bridge design plans, roadway and traffic design plans and preliminary temporary right of way plans that will show where any easements might be required to complete the project. The permitting is comprehensive and includes a federal laws, chapter 131, also known as the Wetlands Protection Act and those intent filing package. The project is located in a mapped area of endangered species, so it's going to have a Mesa Endangered Species filing, something referred to as a simplified review submission. The project will also have a Massachusetts Historical Commission Project Nomification Form submitted for a quality certification package that's due to work that actually occurring in the stream. Also, US Army Corps of Engineers pre-construction notification. Similarly, that's for the work that's occurring in the stream. And Matthew, chapter 85, bridge review submitted. And the purpose of that last step, the bridge submitted, is to set you up for potential state transportation improvement project funding. With regard to the green infrastructure and LIP designs by the Conway School, you've seen some of our conceptual designs in the last project grant where we did a presentation in Town Hall about this time last year, any month or so later. And those include the Laughing Brook site itself there at the near the bridge and stuff in the treat town stormwater before it gets discharged into Eastbrook. Looking at the possibility of some stormwater infiltration and water quality improvements, like two other locations, one on Glen Dale Road and one on Bennett Road. As part of that design by the Conway School, so the Conway School have two community engagement sessions to present concepts. There is some overall the schedule for our outreach touched on on earlier slides, but we have the two quarterly update meetings. On that first day. Today, January 29, and the second one will be May 23. We have the community engagements session with Conway School, the first one on April 23 and the second one on May 16. And later on in the evening of May 16 is when we will have the bridge replacement design public review meeting. So that's our first report and the project as a whole in summary and we'll open it up to questions.
See if I can ask question. Actually, our town accountant was here a few minutes ago on the way to the advisory meeting and talking about the last MVP grant we went through. He mentioned there's still some payment outstanding on that. Now that's something we completed, but we're kind of worried that would this happen with this situation as well where that was the one we shared with East Lawn Meadow and Don, he had a number of, gosh, it was like 70,000 that we haven't been reimbursed from the state on yet. So will it possibly hit our tax rate if we don't get that money back? And is this a danger with any of these MVP programs that there's such a lag time in reimbursement? Because we didn't think, we didn't think we'd be out of the pocket on anything in the first grant.
I agree with the last thing you said, and I don't think you had any out of pocket commitments on the last grant. This is the first time this outstanding amount has been brought to my attention. So I'm unclear as to why there is a delay. Usually it was not supposed to be a delay of that, those money should have all been reimbursed.
Steve, you and I can get on the telephone and work with.
Cliff and Dick perhaps.
The, the, well, the Springfield office certainly is the people we've been dealing with down there and just tell them we can't allow an unreimbursed amount to hit our, to hit our free cash or tax rate in the next fiscal year, so.
Yeah, I'm on board with meeting and having that discussion. I think Andrew should help us, be able to help us resolve it. I just need to understand what it is. Yeah, but what bill or whatever that either got turned down or just not processed?
I didn't get any messages that, that anything that you've submitted for reimbursement has been turned down. So we're entitled to it.
It's the state, you know, 27 people looking over and if there's a period in the wrong place, I'm sure they kick it back for no good reason.
Get busy with this. We had the same situation, as you recall, last year. It was right at the end of the fiscal year and Cliff actually came in and said, we're, I think, $270,000 in the hole. It's going to hit free cash unless you can get it in the door. And we were fortunate to get it in on that grant and, and it came as a result of just calling people up and saying, you know, can we get this done and so forth, so.
So the community engagement one at Laughing Brook in April, is that, is there enough room inside? The, they still have that garage area done or, or is that outside?
It's going to be outside. The plan is just to kind of familiarize the students with the site and just give people a little bit of hands-on opportunity with where we're working. Unless there's weather or something that's prohibiting it, then we'll just have to move it to your usual location in Town Hall.
Right. Anything else? John?
No, we're going to see what sunset is at that day.
Well, I think what, what is, will be important about this project, it's not just rebuilding the bridge or enlarging the culvert so more water from the brook can come downstream and go into the scantic. It's the so-called green infrastructure. It's, it's building areas upstream that can absorb more of the water before it gets into the brook and comes downstream and potentially causes flooding. I mean, every community in some ways has to face this because we've paved over our communities. And so when you, when you pave over, there's no place for the water to go but into the stream. And so this is trying to offset some of that by getting water absorbed upstream.
Now, is there a danger that the, and who are the people that regulate the scantic? I know Ted talked about it at the other meeting. Is there a danger that they think of that as a diversion?
Connecticut Basin.
Yeah, cold water or something like that? Is there a danger they think of that as a diversion to waters that would normally enter the scantic?
I'm not aware of it.
No, I'm just throwing out that question because.
The Army Corps also apparently considers this a navigable river, so they've got regulatory powers as well.
Right, but then we're talking about possibly diminishing the flow going into it. Is that a concern we might? They might say, well, that's, you need to mitigate that or it's a balancing act.
We need to get an answer for that, Steve, I guess. Well, before this project concludes, is there any, any problem with that? I think the whole MVP program is an attempt to anticipate environmental problems that are the result of the changing climate and so forth and to try and prevent problems like flooding. And so I'm not aware of other major environmental problems that the town faces. I don't think we have the same kind of situation as other communities closer to the ocean, for example, and so forth, of rising waters. But there is, there have been floods in the past and this is an attempt to anticipate something like that happening again and trying to offset as much as possible that, that potential.
And the one thing I would add to that is it's still within a watershed, which I know you recognize. Just a matter of slowing it down, maybe doing some retreatment or some storage. And we have a valuable partner there with the Mass Autobahn and the Laughing Brook site because they have a lot of capacity for actually really accomplishing more than is usually possible on the road, on the edges of road sides with regard to your drainage infrastructure.
And we talked to them and they're very much on board with the project.
Thank you very much, Steve. We'll be seeing you.
Very good. Yes, you will. You all, good luck and have a nice calm rest of this season.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
We'll leave it at that. Thanks again. Have a great night.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a decision regarding the town administrator. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Caputo, Mr. Domena and Mr. McNutt for the interest in the town and taking the time to interview and go through the process. And I'd like to thank Mr. Markle for his service to the town over the years and all he's done for us as well as his, his decision to hang around a little bit so he can do a smooth transition, which will be very helpful to us.
Byron Lynch is on, joined the meeting, so if you have any questions.
I would like to thank him too, but it's.
Yeah, I thank Mr. Lynch for, for, for all he's done in the process. And I also like to thank the three department heads who weighed in. We gave an opportunity for all the department heads to weigh in. I'm a little disappointed that more didn't, but for the three who did, the chief of police, the highway superintendent and the building commissioner appreciate their comments and who they thought might be the best candidate. The one, and one critique I have is of the open meeting law. It makes it very difficult for a decision like this when the selectmen can't in private discuss the candidates. Not that, we're not talking about negativity, but just about how we each felt about the fit and, and the interview and the, in the process and that type of thing. It just makes it hard. We haven't had any deliberations amongst each other or even spoken to each other at all about it. And I think that's why I understand, we, we appreciate the need for transparency and openness. But that's, this is one occasion, something like this, where it makes it very, very difficult to have a frank and honest discussion about something that's so important to the town the size of Hampton. So with that said, what say you?
Well, Don, I think that was well said and very, very well put there. We are fortunate to have three qualified individuals interview. Ball all came with some sort of municipal experience in the government. Chris Caputo is the first one. Excellent with municipal finance. I think he understands the budgeting process very well. Has taken on capital projects, has some experience there. And he had a lot of financial experience. I'm not sure if he had quite as much of the TA experience that would fit the town. Brian Domina, the second candidate, very informative about his current role and his responsibilities. He mentioned he has an open door policy, which I liked. He understands the budgeting process, has a very good understanding of the TA position. Comes from a town very close to Hampton, how it's structured. Worked a lot on similar projects in Waitley that Hampton has coming up. Is very knowledgeable and comfortable with writing grants. Understands and has knowledge of IT. I think that's important too. Prefers a collaborative environment. That's, that's a good thing to hear. And it has regional planning experience in his previous job. And then Ryan McNutt, the third candidate, extensive experience in municipal government. He also has an open door policy, which was nice. He likes to participate in community outreach programs. It's good to hear. He understands the budgeting process. He has a very good understanding of the TA position. Has participated in collective bargaining and contract negotiations. Has experience in economic development. He has knowledge and is comfortable writing grants as well and has been part of a master plan writing process. I mean, so I think a lot of those attributes for those candidates, you know, way pretty, pretty positive for the town of Hampton. I have one that stood out to me. I think there's one particular candidate that would be a really good fit for Hampton based on the experience and coming from a similar government structure. You know, after reading more of their resumes, watching the interviews again and then taking the input from the town departments, I personally feel that Brian Domina would be the best fit based on everything presented for the town of Hampton in that position.
John, any comments?
Well, boy, tough to follow that, Craig. Thank you. Thank you for leaving the other four pages behind. I think, no, I really like what Craig did. I think the detailing you had with their experience is important. I mean, certainly Brian had, Mr. Caputo had great financial experience, but not a lot of administrative experience where we needed it. One thing I've done is I've been watching these candidates where I'm able to on TV, on their community programs. Because I think that speaks to a lot of how they interact with the board they work with and how they also distribute the information back to the board. I watched the Waitley, watched the Palmer, wasn't able to watch some of the earlier ones where Mr. McNutt was town administrator before. One thing that did stand out to me, they all had good resumes in different parts. But I do agree with Craig that one candidate had a fit that was better for the town of Hampton. And I'll say, when I watch Waitley, when I watch their select meetings, they're talking about everything we're talking about. And the comportment of Brian with the board, I really liked. We've been lucky, and I'm going to say it, Dr. Markle here. We've been extremely lucky that it comes to these meetings as prepared as he is. I think we would get the same thing from Brian. I would say, and I think it's fair, the three candidates, if only one of them had applied, we could have made it work. And so just to say that we were fortunate to get three candidates that came to the town of Hampton and I commend Bernie for whittling it down, if you will, and bringing three people to us that he said we would not be disappointed with if you took any of them. But I do think one stood out from the other two. And my vote would be for Mr. Domeno.
Thank you. I, I too reviewed the resumes, reviewed the interviews again. Looked at the recordings that I could. Tormented my bride for, for about 10 days.
Two in the morning?
About what I should do. Until finally she said to me, Donald, don't let the very good get in the way of the perfect. Or don't let the perfect get in the way of the very good, which was, which is a, a good point. So I, I thought all the candidates were great and I went back and forth, like I say, for a long time. I appreciate the input by the, the town departments and Craig, what you said and John. And, and I too would, would think that Mr. Domeno would be a good fit for the town. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell that we offer the position of town administrator to Mr. Brian Domena, subject to appropriate contract.
Acceptance and negotiation. All favor of the roll call. Vote this. All favor?
John's in, I.
Don, David, what, I?
Craig Revis, I.
So the process for that, Don, then would be we would invite him to come in here to our meeting. Should he meet with Bob? I mean, Bob's pretty familiar.
I can meet with him and go over terms. I'm sure all the candidates were aware of the basic terms. And see if we have any issues and then.
That might speed things up. If that was knocked out this week, we can lock it in.
Selectmen next week.
Okay, all right.
Do we have to have an executive session that go into terms of contracts?
We would have an.
I wouldn't. I mean.
We can have an exact session.
We can have an exact session, but we have to come out and vote it and.
Right. I would think, and we haven't discussed it in detail, but I would think that the terms, we already have a salary range. We have the, basically what you have.
Benefits, yes.
Benefits, we'll go back to actually what Mary had before. I don't think we're looking to deviate much from that. Now, do you think you'd be able to do that this week?
Sure.
I don't recall, was there a conversation about starting time?
Bernie, are you still on?
Alive, yes. Yeah, I think everything you're doing right now is great. And I, I'm available to Bob and to the board as you, as you hammer out this agreement. If there are any coupling blocks or, you know, any issues that we need to work through. And I think, yeah, and the idea is that, yes, you could have Bob do that and then you could meet an executive session. That's a place where you, under the law, you can meet the executive session to discuss this.
Terms.
Terms and then move forward to announce the settlement once it's, it comes to be.
Okay. Will you, will you notify the candidates of our decision?
I will. I'll do that right now. Yep.
Are you aware of, is Brian able to start? Does he have to give notice? What was your sense of that?
I think he said 30 days.
Quite sure it's, I'm quite sure it's a 30 day. I'll, I'll double check on that. And I will, I was in touch with all the candidates today to let them know that meeting was taking place tonight to remind them of that and that I would be notifying them. And then when I talk to Brian, I will check on his notice period. It's probably.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Good night.
If I could throw something to the chair. The, the person we're talking about seems fairly dedicated. I would, I'm not quite sure if I remember what their meeting dates were in Waitley. But I would offer him the opportunity to, you know, say, look, you can certainly attend our meetings prior to your official state or showing date. And if that's something you want to do on your own. And if the chair would say, oh, there's a conflict, look, we're happy to move a date because we want you to have as much background as possible. So keep that open.
Would you check that with him? Water, water everywhere.
So quick, President of Board, John and Paul are here to talk about the ongoing project. We met with Dan Hall last week and I think Mark Langone was there, Wendell. Three people from DEP. Excellent meeting, were good presentation, good sharing. And I think he was able to answer some questions for the Water Commission where they got a path going forward, hopefully.
Do you want to steer?
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to steer?
Yeah.
Come on down. They got a better view from the camera of you guys right there.
Little on a dazzle of handsome faces. Sorry about that.
This is live.
Well, as John just explained, on January 24th, we met with Dan Hall from the Mass DEP and also Bill Fabry from the WJF Geo Consultants. They wanted to bring us up to date on the issues with our landfill, basically. And you probably, everyone's probably heard about PFAS. It's a polyfluorinated substance and something similar to that.
And it's becoming more of a problem. It's starting to show in more places. We've had some called hits, detections, but they've been under the, the state level. And we had one person that was very close to the, to the maximum level. So we were able to hook them into the existing system. So that, it, it actually started in, in August. So what the, the issue here is that the federal government, EPA, is visiting all those levels. And they're telling us they're gonna go down. They're gonna drop them way low, which is not gonna give us any tolerance. So they suggested that we. Bring water service to everyone surrounding the, the landfill. So we'd be going from sixteen connections up to thirty five. So. And, you know, they gave us some possible places to find some more money to offset this cost. Just to fast forward a little bit, one thing we, we recommended that they, we replace the pumping station. Because the ones in there is kind of limited. And it's got a steel tank in the ground which deteriorates and the state recommends they be replaced. So that's one of the, one of the things that we recommended that we do with, with any first phases. Fortunately. We have, we're well within the limits of the capacity of those two wells that supply the system. We pull the numbers up here. Give them, Paul.
Historically, taking out the data that we have collected. We're using about a hundred and twenty gallons per day per service address. And if we calculate that out to the new number of thirty five services, we'd be looking at forty two hundred gallons per day. Time bond estimates forty nine hundred. So we're in, we're in the ballpark. We are allowed with our current Water Management Act to pump fourteen thousand seven hundred. So we're well within, within. What we can use.
So that's what we're allowed. Right, but you think the wells are capable of sourcing that one?
They should be able to handle the existing amount. If we get to a situation where we would need additional water. We had talked about possibly, you know, putting a third well in that site, you could handle it.
Your storage tank right now is how big?
Believe it's three thousand gallons.
Three thousand. It's not full because you have to, isn't it? But I mean, I'm sure the storage thing is counted on a number of service points as well. And that's probably part of your reason for, we'd like to upgrade not only the storage facility, but perhaps the capacity as well.
Because a three thousand gallon tank, as we've seen in the past, you have any hiccup in the system, you're gonna run out of water. It was originally designed for seven, seven families. And now we're looking at thirty five. So it's really under, the water is there. It's the infrastructure that needs to be upgraded to handle the capacity.
So it's two phases, like we talked about the meeting. You have infrastructure, then you have your expansion. And kind of the question is, I brought up then is, which is more critical? Infrastructure is critical, but if we're getting into this hit thing, the testing range and paying testing until you hook up. Is that more critical because you're gonna be having this quarterly expense for all this testing until you hook them up?
We're kind of between a rock and a hard place here. The way I would look at it is you want to upgrade your infrastructure first so it can handle the extra capacity. However, we are now in a situation where we may have fifteen, sixteen families at risk. Therefore, from a safety perspective, expanding the district first makes more sense. With a caveat, the infrastructure just may not do what it should do. So. You're kind of, you know, you want to get it all done as quickly as possible. You don't want to have a system that hooks people up and then everybody suffers. Yet you don't want fifteen additional families or whatever the number is. At risk of exposure, so tough choices.
One of the issues, one of the things we're looking at by expanding the pumping station is we'll, we'll be putting in two above the ground. Thirty five hundred gallon tanks. So. It will be able to handle any of these hiccups that happen. And even on top of that, if we were to lose even one pump, well, one well goes down. For whatever reason, we're still able to satisfy the system on a single well.
Does that give you more head pressure also because we are talking a bit more elevation change for some of these new locations?
That there, I'm not sure about the pressure situation.
I don't think the pressure is much different between the hydro pneumatic, which is in the ground right now. As opposed to the two above ground storage tanks. I believe from what they had said in the past was. There's a less chance for things to go wrong with the above ground tanks. They would be enclosed out of the elements. Whereas the ones in the ground now, they're, they're metal, they're steel, they're subject to rot and bleach and.
Some of the locations were now.
Right, but whether the tanks in the ground or you have two above ground doesn't change the pressure. Because it still comes out the same one sixty, seventy as I.
I believe it was eighty.
It was eighty at the time.
The way the system's set up now, it's the air pressure from the compressor that creates the water pressure. The new system, we're gonna have pumps after the tanks.
So it's forced pressure.
So the tanks are at atmospheric pressure. They're just holding tanks and you can fill them up. And it's beyond the tanks where you're gonna create the pressure for the system that'll maintain it.
Could you review the thing we talked about? A, if the EPA level drops, now you're into potentially. Another ten, fifteen homes that potentially need filtering and testing. And now that expense is.
As they explained to us at the meeting, these under sea, under the sink carbon filters. What they use for a whole house, they're big, very big. So they're not gonna be cheap and we would have to change those every three months.
And weren't they requiring UV too, on top of that? I thought there was a, a conversation at one point where they said they would mandate a UV test in, or UV system in line with all that.
Only if there's a bacterial contamination.
Old conversation next time, they thought.
One point that was made, and I like the fact. He wants to be cooperative. He wants the DEP to be cooperative and us as well. And he made the point that communities that are proactive in their approach, let's say are treated better by the DEP. But they're in a better situation with them. You don't want an enforcement letter. You want to bring this plan forward. And show that you're committed to addressing it. And no guarantees, but there could be a change in testing. When we're more upfront with that type of thing, which would reduce our annual cost in testing.
If we exhibit a, an effort to stay ahead of this situation, the state is less likely to demand.
Exactly.
So we, the testing, the lower level of testing, is that, are these sixteen houses?
Every.
Yeah, on all, well.
Yeah, how many houses do we have aligned now? Sixteen, okay. So we're gonna talk about adding potentially nineteen more. Okay, is that because the testing level may go down, you know, the, the, the.
No, not directly. Not every house has, has an indication, but.
But, but, but when the EPA comes in with a lower level, these nineteen houses will probably be.
It could be.
Or are there, are there additional houses beyond that?
Geologically, I guess is the answer to that. Whatever the, it's working its way through the ground. And it's like, nobody knows if, if it's gonna migrate to other areas that we haven't seen anything yet.
They've drawn, they've drawn the circle.
And I also think it was what, the testing's not going away. Whether it's here or here at the level of the test.
We have to put another twenty on, who knows?
Well, depends on if they expand their circle. It's a DEP, right?
From what I understand, is the, is the PFAS test alone is four hundred and fifty dollars. But if you take the whole testing, which would include any of the contaminants that originated at the landfill, we could be looking at fourteen hundred dollars.
Per house.
Per quarter.
Per quarter, per house.
Per, per quarter, yes.
But he wasn't mandating the VOC test thing. So we're just talking PFAS right now.
So can you do the infrastructure and the hookup at the same time?
Well, yeah. How big is the checkbook?
I guess that's my question. How big a checkbook, how big a check is that?
It could be done. I don't see why not.
What's the, well, I get back to the infrastructure part. And I know we appropriated money, additional money for the engineering fee. If we said, go ahead and change over the pump house, put the two tanks and stuff. And then may leave the one in the ground and all of a sudden construct the other two and move the pipe so it's only down for a day or something. What's the total time, A, in case to do it, and what's the total time the system might be disconnected?
I don't have those answers. Time bond, the engineering department too would have to answer those. And I, communication was they feel the middle of February, towards the end of February, they'll be done with the. They call it the ninety, ninety percent level.
If I remember correctly, I thought they said the, the new infrastructure, if they do a pump house, would be in a different location than the current. So it'd just be a swap over then. So downtime would probably be minimal.
Do we have enough of the leased area to put that in? I can't remember how much it was.
It's not leased, it's just part of the agreement.
Right, I don't remember if it was two hundred by two hundred or bigger than that.
I think it's, I think it was substantial, right Paul?
I can't remember right now. It was a while ago we looked at that.
I remember it being more than we thought.
So you could have it to also move the pipe over.
That would be the best situation. Build a new structure and then swap it right over. And that would be a fairly, if, if it goes as was discussed, would be, you know, pretty quick. And we could have a tanker there.
You might have a flushing day or something like that.
Well, yeah, you'd have a tanker there to, to supply water while that was happening and the system was being flushed and coming online, so.
We haven't had the discussion, but my thinking is it might be, it might build it in front of the existing pump house. We don't know. Because you have pumps right there, you can't.
But then the cost of that whole thing, you were up in the one to two million range for the infrastructure upgrade?
Sounds about right.
Take the whole package, it might be more.
Don't paint the, don't paint the tanks. Let's cut that right out. And then the expansion part, and you, I know the conversation about, are you gonna do the circle? Which has a benefit for flushing, better flow, but expand, but actually might put in an extra thousand feet of pipe. That doesn't service anything. Do you come off the pipe at different locations for future without connecting? That was a conversation as well. You know, you make the potential connections in the underground so that you're not digging up the road again in the future.
Doing this in phases. Let's say the pump house is the first phase. The second phase might be to connect. Homes that have not been hooked up to the existing system yet. That might be phase four, five, whatever.
Ones that go through the current district, right?
Correct.
We talked about that. We identified five or six or maybe even seven homes on the current line. In his list, and if you looked at the cost of hooking up that last one, that under ten thousand, you would think they'd be in the same ballpark. And in terms of like hooking them up, you already got the line in front. Why would it be any different?
May just be further in, like you said.
Right, but in terms of the, like running new pipe, it's nothing like running new pipe in terms of cost. So balance that. Say you came back and said, oh my gosh, to hook up these six homes right now. It's gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars. But if we keep testing these six homes without hooking them up, it's gonna cost us fifteen thousand dollars. You might say, look. And that would come back to, you could be testing it tonight or knock those tests right off right now. And apply that potential test money towards the upgrade cost. And that's a, a decision to make. That's where I think a bit of a chart or spreadsheet, okay, here's, here's our testing cost projected for all these homes here. And here's the level right now. But when they go to here. You know, now everybody's in the thing. I think it was appreciated that he said, potentially, if you're proactive. And you show good, maybe the testing period might change, which was good. Instead of quarterly, we could go in twice a year with some NDs at the low level. We could be once a year. But you have to be there for us first, rather than us telling you.
Yeah, I came around, I waved with a good feeling on that. Like you said, John, we show initiative here. They'll work with us.
Well, Dan's been working with the town of Hampton for over thirty years. He was involved in the original closure. My dad saying, he was one of the best guys to work with at DEP, so.
And. Just to step back a little bit, Bob has been excellent trying to find money for us.
And Dan actually mentioned a couple of other sources as well.
So. We don't know what's gonna cost. We'll get the cost, construction cost, but. Money doesn't grow on trees.
What was that new thing that Senator Gobi mentioned when she was in? There was something, they were restarting that five year. Bond thing that we were talking about last year, Mill. Is there any?
I don't have any more information on that than we got from that session with Senator Gobi. However, tonight, I was kind of just, on the, on the report, mentioned to the selectmen that. Senator Gobi's weekly reports on what's going on in state government are very useful. And that I'm certainly gonna advise the next TA. He ought to tune in every week. Because it's good information, solid information ahead of time. And not filtered through many other sources. And so. I did send her a message and, and told her what we're looking for. And that, that was the comment that she made, but I had no more other information.
It did say we might be eligible for some zero interest loans too. So that, that could help.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the cost. Maybe we get zero interest loans from our savings account right now if we keep it low enough.
So what's the next step?
Well, we want to present this to the board and get feedback from the board.
One thing I think we talked about the meeting was after you updated us, I think a response from your commission back to the DEP. You know, again, we want to show that proactive thing, you know, I would, I certainly, you know, would suggest that. It come from your committee because you're the people overseeing it, thanking Dan and his people for their appearance. You know, we're committed to dealing with this in a manner that helps the residents.
So are, are we asking for money at this next town meeting? Are we that far, are we that far along?
Well, we're gonna have the plan from time bond pretty soon, which is gonna give you a bit of a number. Then you should probably decide. I mean, you could come back shortly. In my mind, you could come back shortly and like we talked about, look. We should look at hooking these houses up right now because then we'll skip that next texting, testing phase.
Should be pretty easy to get.
That may be, you guys make that call, what you get the numbers, you say.
To get, get a quote on that.
But I'd like to see, I'd like to see maybe from somebody, a spreadsheet of what you think testing is gonna cost. Because right now, I think my fear is that we increased the testing budget already. We didn't anticipate these extra homes inside this budget year. And I hate to tap.
We, we, we wanted a hundred thousand dollars last year.
That was based on testing, how we're gonna be.
It could be double out easily.
Inside this year, you know, that could be the May testing bill, all of a sudden could be twenty thousand dollars and the accounts just down to ten.
Was there any money left, Bob, for these projects from the federal government? I forget the name of it.
Well, I thought the position of the board was that we would use what we have left in the range of four hundred thousand.
We allocated. We allocated already for the, for the engineering costs.
We had the other fifty, forty for that, yeah.
If we need to hook up those other homes, we could pull from that too. Those, what, six or seven?
We should have a number for that.
Six over seven, we're looking at that.
Yeah, and if you look at your average cost of the last one, Craig, that was in the eight, nine range, something like that.
I think it was like ten with.
I think it was nine, six.
And with that scary testing number you're talking about, because those homes are south between the river and the dump. That may be where they say, I want to see VOC testing, and all of a sudden you're at that big testing number. You're down that area, right? So all of a sudden, instead of that two hundred dollar, just PFAS number, we could be at twelve hundred because you're attached to everything. And now your office is like, well, you were spending this or this. With a chart, we could see that easier. And I hate to say it, with the winter we've had right now. And what, I hate to say it, with the winter we've had right now, it's not impossible to do that work in the near, you know, there's no frost in the ground.
Nothing is frozen.
Right, yeah. And you might find contractors, look, hey, I'm looking to fill in right now. I'll do the work for you.
They sometimes do look for, uh, winter work.
Fill-in job. That's how we got, um.
The last project.
The last project. They were filling in. They can encheat just because, rather than keeping the guys idle.
And they went to Florida after.
Lucky them.
So, you're gonna come back to us with a number from Ty and Bond?
Yes.
Okay.
For, well, the report number. You'll have the report back from them. And you'll come back with an estimate on the testing costs. And then maybe get a couple of quotes on hooking up at the same time and let us make up.
Yeah.
Yeah, with your recommendation.
Right, good. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay. We need more meetings like that. That was one of the best statements I've ever seen.
Very collaborative group.
Right.
We have a couple of invoices from work down at the Green Meadows School from here.
Yeah, I saw that. I mean, I was surprised to get that kind of note. I would've thought, a guy, well, back with Ed. Would've just gone against the, would've just gone against the.
Fifteen thousand.
Thousand, right. Uh, did we get, I saw the note, I didn't see the amount.
There's two.
There's two, yeah, forty-seven, excuse me, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And what's the other one?
Fifty-one fifty.
Fifty-one fifty. So, it's the ten thousand bucks.
Right.
There's a threshold there, right? We have that.
Fifteen thousand, yeah.
Yeah, but typically, if we spend fifteen, they'd spend fifteen. So, you know, they would match the fifteen for the work. So, I'm saying if we're gonna do this, they still owe.
Who's that?
The school district.
The regional district.
Right. You know, we look at a cap of thirty thousand, which can contribute fifteen. So, if we're gonna pay both these and they can ten, then they haven't touched their twenty in my mind. Unless they have some other project, they could say, look, we paid for this. Fine, just tell us. I'm fine, I'm fine with saying this is appropriate for the school building repair.
Our building.
Yeah, school building repair. Sure.
Okay, gonna pay this one.
Fine, pay the bill.
Pay the bill.
Who's got the real one?
Clo, uh, closing date for the town meeting warrant?
I've seen that in other meetings. So, do we have the, the calendar? Did advisory come up with, what was their date for the, uh, proposed date for their hearing?
April something, I think. April.
Advisory public hearing, April eighth.
Okay, so.
April first?
Look at them, well, I mean.
Yeah, April first, I think, gives the selectmen time to review the law twice.
To actually close it. I mean.
To close it.
I'm saying to close it, accepting no more.
Yeah, right.
Well, their meeting on the, you said, what day to meet?
April eighth.
April eighth.
I don't think we're closing on the first, I'm.
No, fifteenth, March fifteenth?
I would think earlier, yeah, fifteenth. You know, it gives us three weeks. Look, if there's nothing, we've done it before. Both open and open during that, right?
Because the, the experience of the past is, I give you the draft and you massage it and make changes, and then I have to come back another week. And you review it again. Sometimes we have to do it three times. So, you, you, we gotta be far enough out to, to let that happen and also make room for the.
Well, I'm trying to think if we have a sense of articles that we know. We know that, for instance, there has to be something for that easement for the tower. Rosa said that needs to be voted at town meeting, actually, for expansion of the tower lease, let's stay law, whatever. It's real property or whatever it's called, darn it.
I just don't get that one.
Yeah.
Well, we don't make those laws. The Attorney General's Office are those people.
Yeah, fiber optic? I don't know. Okay.
Uh, potential truck from the highway department, pickup truck from the highway department.
Uh, the Hammond, Wolverhampton Regional School District.
Regional Green Mountain?
Regional, maybe.
Change, yeah, maybe, yeah.
All right.
Government study might have something.
Would that be just a report, though? Potentially, are they gonna change the bi law or?
I don't think they make the recommendation of bi law changing that, so. I don't know either, but, uh, I know they're meeting tomorrow night, so maybe we'll find something out about what their intention is.
Nothing with the master plan.
What else you got? We might, we don't know.
I don't think.
We might have something from the water commission, we don't know, right?
I think there's gonna be some of them no matter what, one way or the other, right? Yeah. Um, the plan is that I think we're still hopefully bringing something forward for the spring for the seniors in our addition.
Oh, yeah, and then we got the, uh, fire station. Could be looking for money for their.
Engineering.
Yeah, yeah. When's that meeting gonna be? You're gonna open the one response at that point, right?
Open the one response? Uh, I don't have it set yet. Uh, didn't have a chance to get it done today, which was a short day. But tomorrow, I'm here all day now. And I'm here all day Wednesday and Thursday, so we'll get, we'll get the meeting going. Get a chair, get them copies, and, uh.
I know Ed had reached out to make sure everybody got sworn in.
Be under, be underway.
Okay, is that, you're gonna have to post that meeting or?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's a meeting established, it's a committee established by the Board of Selectmen, so the, the open meeting law rides along.
Okay. So, because that, now the master plan committee, which is a established subcommittee, the planning board does not need to be posted.
Mm-hmm. They do not? No, they do need.
They do? As a subcommittee?
It's an official, it's an official committee.
Other than the board.
Yeah, yeah, the board. Even though it's a different board, but nevertheless.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of Ridgeline that were posted. All right, so we picked the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, March fifteenth. So, you'll notify the boards and everybody? I will. I'm gonna meet with, uh, everybody on Wednesday of this week.
So, we need to figure out, um, based on what advisory is doing, when we wanna start dragging boards in, uh, down.
Yeah.
You know, because we want them, you know, we wanna see the police budget before they go to advisory with and stuff like that. So, Mark's ready for next week if you want. And believe me, it's pretty small. Besides the truck, it's really no different.
Okay.
No, I just wanna tell you, you're not looking for a dump truck or anything major this year.
Or another, another expansion of his.
The second floor is very small, very small.
The bird.
The swimming pool in the back is, is.
That's part of the water thing they're going. MVP program. Diversion.
All right, what do we got? We got the, there might be a police cruiser request.
Always a police cruiser request.
We, we got, uh, a request to use the building from somebody. Yes.
Should have a copy of his email in your folder.
Yeah.
His name's Cameron Schmuck. Email, a little more information.
Let's do a hockey banquet?
Yes.
So, I know we talked about policy for building use in the past, and we couldn't find one for this building. Do, should we establish a building use policy? Might be an appropriate time to do that.
Well, usually, um, you would distinguish between municipal groups uh, and then nonprofits, and then for-profits and, and have different scales, rates for those.
Can we charge rental?
Sure.
To nonprofits?
Sure.
And, and?
Probably wanna do something nominal, uh, but and, and the other condition is that it, it's allowed when the building is not being used for municipal purpose. So, for, you could give this person permission, we'd have to make sure that the room is gonna be available. They want the auditorium, I assume, right?
Yeah.
On a Saturday. This is the thing.
So, what is the library?
You look, the library's open. They're talking, I assume it's a fairly good crowd. And we just don't have the parking or the access. We look what happened with that Miss Massa, Youth Massachusetts thing that happened where it just overflowed, literally, everything upstairs. I would encourage them to contact the senior center. They have a much better facility for that type of thing. I don't think the rates are that bad. I think they can get maybe fifty or seventy-five an hour and something. You know, maybe some community donations. And they have a, they have a sound system. They have the PA.
They have the big cafeteria, they would be.
If they have some prepared foods, they have the kitchen right there. If I was organizing an event and between those two places, I'd take the senior center over.
Well, that makes sense, sure.
Right, and better parking, better access. So, um, and I think the Saturday.
Library is open.
Library is open, parking is bad.
Yeah, library's open till one, so we don't know what time they want, 'cause it's taken.
Well, three or four hours and it's just, it's who's opening, who's in charge of cleaning up. You look at the, when the senior center does, I believe they have to pay custodian as Rudy comes in or something like that. Who's responsible for cleanup? It's just, we don't have a good fit for that type of thing. But we do have a building that is a good fit. Put that money towards the expansion, right? Put that money towards the expansion.
Yeah. So, you'll contact him and suggest he gets a hold of.
Should we reach out to Becky?
Yeah, yeah. All right, selectmen's reports. We have a zoning board of appeals case in our package here just to look at.
You're going. Aren't you the ZVA rep?
Yeah. What is it?
Your packet.
They have one, one meeting a year, I think, right? I like it used to be.
February twenty-seventh, I like, oh, that's.
You've got plenty of time, get that super.
Plenty of time to get, yeah, get a haircut and everything. Both of them, get both of them cut.
So, uh, the senior center building committee is, is going on pretty well. Obviously, other things, I did not attend the housing meeting last week, but I believe they have a CPA request coming forward. And Lisa's talking to Don, or to Doug about that. So, there is, we quickly report from the CPA. Um, I've heard that there is gonna be a request for funds for a property. You may have seen an email on North Road. And I think that's gonna be a source of vibrant discussion.
At town meeting? Is that the local town meeting?
No, at CPA.
At CPA.
Because it doesn't go to town meeting without a positive vote of CPA. So, I think it can't just be assumed that just because we have X number of dollars in the bank, everything gets done.
Yeah.
So, is it good value? Are we paying the right dollars, stuff like that?
Does that come in front of us for discussion at some point too, or does it only go through CPA first?
It's only CPA. They have a reps from five, from five committees, it's still by law thing, and then two at large, and, yeah, four at large.
Then it goes to town meeting, right?
Right, there is one vacancy on CPA right now, but it is the moderator's appointment. There are two selectman appointments and two moderator appointments. And I believe I saw Rick today, and he's got somebody who accepted the, uh, the spot, Phil Schneider.
Okay.
Lives in town, nice guy. Said he knew you.
Yeah? Yes, Mr. Mike, yeah. Fellow Big Ryan employees.
Oh, man, that club. The guys on the golf tournament, jeez.
Do you have a report?
I have nothing to report. Except that I've moved to accept Craig's report.
Discussion.
Right, exactly. Have it typed up in before.
The planning committee, we talked about the last meeting, and they're doing February first is a school committee meeting, so they're gonna, we'll take a look at that. So, that'll be interesting.
So, uh, I think I mentioned before, so we can attend as citizens.
Yeah, just. Town administration report. Okay, here we are. Um, I mentioned already, uh, Aunt Gobi's weekly meetings being important for the town.
Where's that spreadsheet, Bob? Is that on the server or is that on the Laserfish? The master grant spreadsheet?
It's on the Laserfish, but I'm updating it, so.
So, you move it from your desktop to the?
Yeah, I move it up there. Um, the, the sheet of paper is about that thick with the ARPA.
That's not on your desk, is it? I thought that desk was a holy site.
It is unfortunately on the desk. I'm trying to winnow, winnow it down. We did the Eagle Court, uh, yesterday. That's a good program, sponsored by St. Cecilia's Church. They must've had, uh, twenty-five boy scouts there, plus their scout masters and others, and Ted was there.
Yeah, I had to speak to a scout troop the week before over at, uh, United Church. One of the requirements is a civics badge. And I think it's something I've, shoot, I think I've done it ten times in my life to, you get quizzed by him. And the parents are behind him and, you know, none of them asked about the bus, which was a good thing, so.
Uh, and I did speak to Chief Twombly, which we'll discuss later on, about his proposal for a, a position in the state, in the police department. And the other thing I'm working on, you can see six items at the bottom, uh, grant opportunities. I did watch, uh, a webinar. And right now, before you apply for a grant, there's usually a webinar to give you information. I watched the webinar on the dredging grant. I think it's a perfect fit for Mill Pond. And I'm in touch with the Conservation Commission and try and bring the information that they're, uh, generating uh, into the application. And, uh, I think this is gonna be a go. Um, and there's plenty. I mean, I think the, the grant allows up to two and a half million. So, I think that pond can be saved and restored.
It's good to hear.
And then the others are, are, are here, so. All right, anything else? Uh, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss uh, continuing negotiations with the police union as provided for in exemption number three. And I determine that if, uh, we need to go to executive session so that we can protect our litigating position.
Without a return to open session?
Without a return to open session.
Well, I'll make that motion. Sorry. John Plonine?
Donald Davenport.
Craig Rivers-Stye.
Thank you all. Have a good night. See you next week. Hey, we're meeting Tuesday next week.
Position.
It's Tuesday next week.
Good luck, Sarah.
Okay. I want you to come down here on Monday, Ted, and like, where is everybody?
Tuesday next week, right.
Call, call John and let him know if you would, please.
Tuesday next week.
Thank you.
Question before I let you guys go into executive session. Um, John Placer, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Who was the other gentleman?
Bob, do you wanna end? Do you wanna end the meeting?
Oh.
Do I want to end our meeting?
End the, yeah.
Paul Garwacki.
Okay. What?
You want, you know, the other member?
Oh, Paul Garwacki?
Yeah.
You wanna try and spell his name?
Yes, please and thank you.